It is rewarding to see so many members of the community here with us tonight. Our meeting will now come to an end. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance which will be led by my family.
I would like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now for a moment of silence. For our men and women in uniform and at home and abroad. For our own village police force and firefighters who are committed to protecting our safety and for all those who are in some way troubled. Please be seated. I'd like to present an overview of how we will proceed this evening. The meeting will be comprised of three sections. The annual organizational meeting during which we will administer the official oaths of office for me as mayor and for the newly elected trustees, Brian Dorni, Stephen McRinos, Mark Hayer, and Louis Menudo, to reflect the recent elections. We will also make appointments which we are required to complete under state law or our village code. The second section of tonight's business will focus on adopting the 2019-2020 budget. And lastly, we will proceed to our normal routine of business covering this evening's agenda. At this time, I would like to ask our village clerk, Mrs. Karen Altman, to report on the results of the March 19th village election.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The results were Theresa A. Truvey for mayor, two-year term office, 231 votes; Brian C. Dorni trustee, two-year term, 113 votes; Mark A. Hayer trustee, two-year term, 194 votes; Stephen S. McRinos trustee, two-year term, 182 votes; Louis M. Menudo trustee, one-year term, 450 votes. And this year, just to let everybody know, we had 271 people voting. That was including 41 absentee ballots.
Thank you very much. Now I would like to ask village Justice Mathers to administer the oath of office to me.
I'm accustomed to having to public speak. And I teach you just in case, it's a law. He said, well, the normal routine, if you're going to, it was like that. He said, there's no normal routine. Who should know that? I haven't had the dubious pleasure of sitting in each one of your seats. So I'll knock down here and grab my prayers. You're crazy right here. I state your name.
I, Theresa Truvey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of mayor of the Incorporated Village of Garden City.
Of the office of mayor of the Incorporated Village of Garden City.
In Nassau County, New York.
In Nassau County, New York.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations by the powers of the Senate.
I am sincerely honored and humbled at the same time to become your mayor. I thank you, my community, for your support and confidence in me. I enjoy the work involved being a member of the Board of Trustees. And you can rest assured that I will continue my commitment to you in that undertaking. I hold fast today to the goals I presented to you when I was first appointed to the Board. To keep our tax burden in check, we have received high praise from communities. And to strive to maintain the character and quality of life in our beautiful village. Now we are going to enter into photo-taking. Photo-taking as we know it is a very active thing to do, if you put it that way. My family should come up. This is my daughter Gabrielle, my son Thomas, my husband Joseph, my granddaughter Anne-Marie, my granddaughter Taitlin, my grandson James, my daughter-in-law Jackie, my daughter Elizabeth, and my son-in-law Jerry. And not less but not least, my son Jim. So first let's go over to take a picture with the family. Let's kind of share my end. And then, and then with all the trustees. How about that? Trustees cluster in. At this time, there are a couple of people that I would like to thank. The first is Tom Simpson. Tom, cancer-related disease. Tom Simpson is the chair of the nominating committee of the CPOA. He has been that for considerable, a considerable amount of time. In times when it was hard to get people to sit on boards, Tom would take care of that and he would be right in line to go to the elections and continue on. Tom, I would say, was the backbone of the CPOA for many, many years. One December, December 12th, maybe, 2012, I read something in the Garden City News and it was about the village and I thought, you know what, let me go back to my CPOA. I had been on the CPOA in the East earlier for two years. And I met Tom there and he was looking for people. And first he said to me, would you consider being a director? And I said, all right. We came to my house the next morning and dropped an application in the mailbox and he, it wasn't for director, it was for secretary. Would you be the secretary? The secretary is a job that no senior really wants. I didn't say no. And then I became the president and then I was placed on Board of Trustees. So I am grateful to him. He stood by me through all those years and I want him to know that I am thankful. And I'll tell you the truth, he has done so much for his community and it's been unknown. And he would be a good person to be added by the Chamber of Commerce when the appropriate time came. The next person I would like to thank is my husband Joe. I must say that he is patient, he is understanding, he is kind, and I will say this, you cannot sit on Board of Trustees without a supporting spouse. It would be very... And I just wanted everyone to remember that there will be refreshments served after we are finished with tonight's meeting. And you just follow the crowd, just follow where everyone's going. Okay, I think at this time, we are going to swear in the, oh yes, the trustees. I'd like to offer my congratulations to all of the recently elected trustees, Brian Dorni, Mark Hayer, Steve McRinos, and Lou Menudo. And they will come up and Judge Mathers will swear them in.
I, Brian Dyer.
Will solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As trustee of the Village of Garden City.
As trustee of the Village of Garden City.
Nassau County, New York.
Nassau County, New York.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Duly elected judge of the State of New York, I hereby declare you...
I'd like to congratulate these trustees. And also, I would like to recognize our continuing trustees, Robert Bolabrook, John Delaney, and Colleen Foley. I will now make the following appointments. These are people who serve at the pleasure of the mayor. Deputy Mayor Robert Bolabrook, Hayer, John Delaney; Environmental Advisory Board Chairperson, Stephen McRinos; Library, Colleen Foley; Public Works, Mark Hayer; Zoning Change Review Committee, Louis Menudo Chair, John Delaney; H. Bradford Gustafson; Cosmo Vinesiale, John G. Villanueva; Electrical, now I will move to appointments that are subject to Board of Trustee approval. Electrical Inspector Services, Per Retainer, Certified Electrical Inspections; Bond Counsel, Hawkins, Delafield, and Wood, LLP; Labor Counsel, Bond, Skjolnik, and King, LLP; General Counsel, B. Ready, Vishbane, Hatter, and Donovan, LLP; Existing Tax Litigation Transition and Acorn, Cullen, and Dykman, LLP; Fiscal Advisor, Capital Markets Advisors, LLC; Assessor, Thomas Donato; Board of Police Commissioners, Kenneth O. Jackson Chair, Mark Hayer, Ralph Slezzi; Traffic Commission, Brian Dorni Chair, Robert Bolabrook, Louis Menudo, Mark Hayer; Police Department Designee, Department of Public Works Designee; Finance and Audit Committee, Robert Bolabrook Chair, John Delaney, Colleen Foley; Committee to Fill Vacancies on Boards and Commissions, Theresa Truvey Chair, Mark Hayer; Legal Committee, Brian Dorni Chair, John Delaney; Public Information Committee, Stephen McRinos Chair, Includes Village Press Releases and Statements, Robert I. Bolabrook, and Colleen Foley; Public Relations Consultant, Per Retainer, Carissa Giordino; Associate Justices, Brian Demany, Merrill Bisconde; Designation of Official Newspapers, Garden City News, Garden City Live. I ask for a motion to approve the foregoing. I'll second it, and was the vote unanimous?
No.
Oh, thank you. Appointments by Board of Trustees only. LIRR Third Track Committee, Brian Dorni Chair, Stephen McRinos, Joseph D. Francisco; Board of Ethics, Richard Silver Chair, Alan Mathers, Valerie Lofstad; Designation of Banking Depositors, J.P. Morgan Chase Bank, TD Bank, and Capital One; Schedule of Regular Meetings of Board of Trustees, 2019, April 25, May 9, and 23, June 6, and 20, July 18, August 15, September 19, October 3, and October 17, November 7, and 21, December 5, and then in 2020, January 9, February, December 19, thank you, January 9, February 6, February 24, Monday, March 5, and 19, April 6. Special meetings can be called at any time. I request a motion to approve foregoing, and a second. I think that was approved unanimously. Oh, I'm sorry, all those in favor? Thank you for your patience. At this time, I would like to begin with the first item on the agenda this evening, which is the swearing in of the elected fire chiefs and line corporate officers. I will be swearing in the fire chiefs. And I would like to ask trustee Delaney to administer the oath of office to the line corporate officers in his capacity as liaison to the fire department. Okay, now he will come up to be sworn in. All right, first, I will swear in the oath of office to the chief. Chief, will you come up?
Back on.
I do so solemnly swear that I will protect and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
Further, I will abide by the bylaws and code.
Further, I will abide by the bylaws and code.
And general orders of the Garden City Fire Department.
And the general orders of the Garden City Fire Department.
And that I will at all times.
And that I will at all times.
Carry out the duties assigned to me.
Carry out the duties assigned to me.
As a chief of the Garden City Fire Department.
As a chief of the Garden City Fire Department.
And that I will at all times.
I will at all times.
Strive to protect lives and property entrusted to my care.
Strive to protect property and lives entrusted to my care.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God. By the powers vested in me as mayor of the Village of Garden City, I declare you duly installed. Congratulations. Okay. Thank you. I.
I will.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will protect and defend.
That I will protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
Further, I will abide by the bylaws and code.
Further, I will abide by the bylaws and code.
And general orders of the Garden City Fire Department.
And general orders of the Garden City Fire Department.
That I will at all times.
That I will at all times.
Carry out the duties assigned to me.
Carry out the duties assigned to me.
As Assistant Chief of the Garden City Fire Department.
As Assistant Chief of the Garden City Fire Department.
And that I will at all times.
And that I will at all times.
Strive to protect lives and properties entrusted to my care.
Strive to protect lives and properties entrusted to my care.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
By the powers vested in me as the mayor of the Village of Garden City, I declare you duly installed. Congratulations.
I state the name. Do solemnly swear. That I will protect and defend. The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
Further, I will abide by the bylaws and code.
Further, I will abide by the bylaws and code.
And general orders of the Garden City Fire Department.
And general orders of the Garden City Fire Department.
That I will at all times.
That I will at all times.
Carry out the duties assigned to me.
Carry out the duties assigned to me.
As an officer of the Garden City Fire Department.
As an officer of the Garden City Fire Department.
And that I will at all times.
And that I will at all times.
Strive to protect lives and property entrusted to my care.
Strive to protect lives and property entrusted to my care.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
By the powers vested in me as the fire commissioner of the Village of Garden City, I declare you duly installed. Congratulations.
I want to thank Chief Dell for his years of service as his officer, Assistant Chief, and Chief of Garden City Fire Department. He put in numerous amount of hours, time in the department, and I think he deserves a round of applause. And as someone in charge, I would like possibly a, as for any excuse for the remainder of the meeting, including Chief Dell, so we can add to it a celebration.
At this time, before we go on, I'd like to thank Brian Trustee Dorni for his two years of service as mayor. I would like to ask for a motion to open up the public hearing with regard to the 2019-2020 budget. May I have a motion? Trustee McRinos gives us that motion, and can I have a second? Trustee Foley is the second. Four, okay. That was a unanimous vote, okay. Would there be any discussion? Will you go to the question? Do any of the... Before I ask for citizens' comments, I would like to ask the outgoing chairman of our finance committee, trustee McRinos, to give us an overview of the budget.
Thank you, Mayor Truvey. Congratulations to you and the trusted trustees. I am proud to discuss...
I am proud to discuss the proposed budget. As I mentioned at the last budget session, it's getting more and more challenging to pass a budget under the tax cap. We have challenged our Finance Department, Village Administration, and Department Heads to present a budget that is conservative, provides fair wages to our employees, as well as giving them the tools and equipment to allow them to provide the services our residents deserve. Our current budget accomplishes this and more. It provides funding to finally address the stabilization of St. Paul's, improve the condition of our fire station, and improve our water assets in the pool. And for the latter, we will look to implement an 80% across-the-board reduction in membership fees. At 1.40%, our tax levy increase has once again ruled the tax cap and has averaged 1.19% over the past four years. And at 62.7 million, our budget increases have averaged 1.2 million over the past four years. I would like to thank the Finance Department headed by Mrs. Bloom, Mrs. Swazie, Mr. Rose, Mrs. Roverland, and all the Department Heads. I would also like to thank my fellow trustees and the members of CBRAC for all their hard work during the voting season.
Do any of the trustees wish to speak?
Just a quickie. I think it said 1.84. It's actually 1.5.
1.48.
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak? A comment on the budget. Hearing no further comments, is there a motion to close the budget hearing? Trustee Delaney, and is there a second? And all in favor? I move to close the public hearing. Do I have a second? Did I just do that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, all right. Can I have a motion to close the budget? And a second? All in favor? Unanimous. At this time, do I hear a motion that pursuant to Section 508 of the New York State Village Law that the following budget of estimated revenues and expenditures of the Village of Garden City for the fiscal year June 1, 2019 to May 31, 2020 be and same approved and adopted as filed? May I have a motion? Mr. Delaney, Trustee Delaney, and do I have a second? Trustee Foley, and all in favor? This is a unanimous motion. The next order of business is another budget resolution regarding the collection of taxes under this budget. The motion is as follows. Whereas A A, no, I'll do it. A, a budget of estimated revenues and expenditures of the Village of Garden City for the fiscal year June 1, 2019 to May 31, 2020 was adopted by the Board of Trustees at this meeting following a public hearing thereon pursuant to Section 5 dash 508 of the Village Law. And B, taxes in the amount of $51,339,715 are required for the purpose of meeting the proposed expenditures provided for in such budget. And C, it has been further determined that such taxes be apportioned against all of the taxable property in the Village of Garden City as set forth on the 2019 assessment roll at the rate of $48.765 on each 100 of assessed valuation thereon except properties of the Long Island Railroad Company, which shall be taxed in accordance with the provisions of the Real Property Tax Law. Now therefore, we have resolved that pursuant to the provisions of Section 1420 of the Real Property Tax Law, the Village Clerk B and she hereby is authorized and directed to extend and carry out on such roll the amount to be collected from the owners of properties listed therein as herein above specified. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution? Trustee Delaney. Thorny, thank you. Do I have a second? Trustee Foley. Any discussion on this motion? Would there be any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, or if any discussion, all of those in favor say aye. All opposed. The motion is adopted unanimously. The next order of business is another budget resolution regarding the fixing of the tax rate under this budget. The resolution is as follows, resolved. A, that pursuant to Section 1420 of the Real Property Tax Law, the following funds necessary to meet the obligations of the Village of Garden City for the fiscal year of June 1, 2019 to May 31, 2020 be raised by levy of tax on all taxable property in the Village of Garden City as set forth in the 2019 assessment roll of the village, being the assessment roll completed on April 1, 2019. Total amounts of budget for the fiscal year of June 1, 2019 to and including May 31, 2020 as adopted by the Board of Trustees following the public hearing thereon held April 8, 2019 of $65,508,734 less appropriated surplus, $1,598,888 less estimated revenues for 2017-18, $12,570,131 leaving the balance to be raised by the tax levy of $51,339,715. B, that the tax rate for the collection of said tax of said Village tax levy be fixed at $48.765 per $100 of assessed valuation on such taxable property. C, that said taxes shall be collected in two equal instalments pursuant to the provisions of Section 1434 of the Real Property Tax Law. The first instalment to become due and payable on June 1, 2019, and the second instalment to become due and payable on December 1, 2019. And D, that pursuant to subdivision 2 of Section 1434 of the Real Property Tax Law, a discount of 1% being at the rate of 2% per annum be allowed on the payment of the second half of the 2019 Village tax due on December 1, 2019, provided the same is paid prior to June 30 simultaneously with the first half of such tax that is due and payable on June 1, 2019. And E, that the Mayor B and she hereby is authorized to execute and deliver the Village Clerk a warrant, directing her to proceed with the collection of such taxes as provided in Article 14 of the Real Property Tax Law. Do I have a motion? And do I have a second? And all in favor? That was passed unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we are finished with the organizational and budgetary portion of the agenda. I would like to ask if Mrs. Swazie or any of our Department Heads would like to comment on agenda items.
Mayor Truway, first of all, congratulations to you and all the trustees who elected or appointed this evening. Actually, despite the girth of the back material, it is a very light agenda. I will ask the Department Heads to respond or give comment on it, and I will add any substantive comments I can and will.
Mayor, I have forwarded a fund A on the consent calendar, item one. Towards the end, there is an error in the number. If may I ask that the agenda be corrected that the number of $95,819.52 be changed to $85,578.2 as a result of additional payments that have been made to the village. Certainly, $85,578.02.
Mr. Defense is still?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Truway. Congratulations. I just want to make a comment on items six and seven on the agenda. These are agreements that the villagers have been into in regards to their legal services agreements in relation to water contamination, the 1.4D accident, TFO, TFOAs. This agreement gives a point share and to represent the village in any type of legal action the village might take in regards to water contamination due to 1.4D accident and other contaminants.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Jackson?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Number five, we're seeking approval to adopt the stop duty to the light ramp. It's a deal state that's changed the procedure. It's a five-year grant. This helps around those that makes our road safer.
Congratulations.
Thank you, yes, Mayor. Congratulations. Congratulations on your two years as well. Number eight on the agenda is a list of additional change orders and additional work that we require at the pool project. We are progressing very well on the project, but as we get a little further, we keep having things pop up in front of us. So you have a detailed list there. I know in the backup, we supply the board members with photographs and diagrams as to the need and the reason for these. They involve some electrical work, replacement of Yankee gutter system, another 60 feet, replacing of existing light fixtures that were not in the original scope of work. And another item that came upon us last week when they were doing the concrete work on the deck, there's a small retaining wall by the adult area that is in need of replacement. So we have a request to fund the project, an additional funding request of about $40,000 in front of you to complete this work. Item number nine, we are exercising kind of the adoption of one of the alternates in the bid for this project. We find that we can do this one within the budget. We're going to replace the foul poles that are there. And this, again, this was bid in the original budget, so we're still within the contingency on that. Then the community park security camera upgrade system. This was originally projected for fiscal year 2021, but due to the condition of the cameras and a lot of the wiring at community park, both at the pool, the tennis, and the clubhouse area, in consultation with the police department and under their security infrastructure project, we are requesting the board's consideration to kind of fast-forward that area of the park system and so that we can go ahead and get that work all repaired and up and running. In order to fix the equipment that we had there, it's going to be about $20,000. It's not a good investment. So we're requesting it do it right, the way it was projected under the major project.
If I may add just a little color to that, please. The existing camera systems at Community Park are four disparate systems. If an agency technology, they're unconnected. The contemplated plan in 2020-21, which is throughout the entire park system, which includes Community Park, would be a centralized camera system that can back the police headquarters as all the others were stolen. So for $20,000 to fix the existing system, we're asking for more money because in 2020-21, it'll cost another $8,000 to $10,000 in labor to go back up in that alley and restring the Cat 5 cable. Total waste of money. This also allows for repair, an operational repair of the existing analog system so we get to 2020-21. But the real piece in here that is costly is the server. If we bring the server down to Community Park, we can get a feed right back here. So we get the advantages of the system two years from now today with a small investment, and we also create and lay the line for the future camera systems where we go digital. So we just think it's good money to spend now versus throwing the money away later and getting the benefits.
Okay, a quick question. How long are we to go to the conclusion of Page 2?
All fence work, one of those small section of five-foot fence to do. They're working on that today. The saw is in. We're going to do some work in the outfield. The lighting is done. Looks very good that we'll be ready.
When will we be operational?
Hoping for Saturday afternoon.
We walked back the pool facilities, so we I thought we had already increased something.
We did.
It's changing, I don't remember what you worked.
So is 834 the original number or the modified number?
834 is the original number.
And so is the 874 inclusion of $40,156?
Yes.
There's a couple of items, there's a couple of items in here that I'll call out D and F specifically. And I know our trustee brought even that facility, but they're changing all of the under roof for the entrance center and the outside part of the deck. But there's certain portion in the walk-in solid days of management between showers and bathrooms, which is going to be rebuilt there in the old style where you basically replace like an outside sheet rock and paint it. It requires maintenance. I asked them to give you price on the same board they use in the ground so we maintenance free. Number F, there's a system for wall by the adult pool where the handicap, idiot confinement ramps being put in. The walls in the past three years were just putting concrete over to make it look rounded and new, but it falls apart every year. We keep patching it that way. When the entry steps out, the wall basically disintegrated for about 18, 20 feet. So rather than put a new wall attached to two old pieces, it's not a good investment, but I asked them for a full price on the longer wall, which is the right way to do it. So those are pieces significantly, a large portion of $40,000. Bill changes to 50,000.
Make a comment on the project too. Just like when I did your house, I found stuff and you'll build a wall. I would probably do this, but I think starting a $840,000 project with only $15,000 of taxable property, should decide on our project. I would have been less than 10% at least. So I think that should show the VR.
We started the project with $70,000. And we're using the last 20 of that now, but the total contingency was $70,000.
So is it 834 plus 70?
No, it was contained within the 834.
So we've already used 70%.
Yeah. We had a big change order request at the previous meeting.
Ralph, can I follow up on the question on the cameras? Do I understand that what we're doing is instead of waiting until 2021, we're spending the money now? Is that basically the bottom?
So in 2021, 2020-21, there's a $435,000 recreation parks camera installation, which is all digital, and comes back here to the police headquarters. That's all your camera system restored. A sub portion of that at Community Park, we're pulling forward the server piece. We're also, by doing that, we're bringing Community Park forward, not the whole project. So it's, so we're asking for 70, but 20 of that has to be spent anyway just to be prepared for disparate systems.
So we're moving money forward instead of waiting until 2020?
Yes.
2021, we're doing, okay.
It's just a portion of it.
Ralph, as the way technology changes, are those servers going to be obsolete in two years? I mean.
The servers, these are DVR units. Right now, we have four different units of different ages. We're going to unite them on one DVR, centralize the pool. But servers usually have a five to six-year shelf life. It depends on what the server's doing too. These servers are not like the servers we use here every day. The pool is operational only 12 weeks of the year, but this is, but the system will be up and running 24/7, previously five days a year.
It's more likely that the cable could be up and running. So we're sure that's the Cat 5 could be sufficient, not the Cat 6?
No, Cat 5 should be fine. The server should be good.
One of my favorite topics will be putting in signage, facilities monitored by cameras. Making large signs.
Two, two feet.
Could like to right now. Mr. Rover, is there existing signage on the camera systems now?
I don't think so.
Okay, so we need to add that. We need to add.
The whole purpose is the curb, right? The kindergartners would make signs.
You see, we use crayons.
Are there any further questions from our Department Heads? Are there any further questions from our department heads? I am now opening up the floor. Twenty citizen comments on the agenda items. Is there anyone? Please come forward.
Agenda F.
Is there agenda?
Congratulations to everybody. 2A, transfer funds. Salt usage exceeded budget of now. Salt usage. I'm going to come up, boys, I see what's going on.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Okay, sorry, Mayor.
Microphone, is it on?
Is it on?
Yeah, I think it is.
It's on.
Testing, testing. Anytime there's a dusting, a snow, I'm talking a dusting where it's barely visible, and then you have warm temperatures forecasted. After the dusting, the snow, whatever. The entire area gets blanketed with salt, and the salt stays forever. And the salt, you know, you have to breathe it. It gets reduced to a powder. It goes everywhere in your car, vots everything. It's just unnecessary. And then, like, one night in particular, it was cold. Everything was dry and clean, okay, but it was cold out, just cold. Parking lots, dry, clean, streets, dry and clean, no precipitation forecasted. Entire area was blanketed with salt. I mean, I'm talking a thick layer of salt. Ridiculous. Anyway, that's number one. Number two, number 11, St. Paul thing. I can't get rid of this thing. I'm sorry, Judge Mathews is not here, he left. When he was mayor, 25 years ago, I submitted to him a letter that is still valid to this day about what to do with St. Paul. Miss Mayor, did you know that biospheres are being planned for Mars and the moon? Did you know that? Tell me that.
Can you speak your comments to the material on the agenda?
Okay, it's number 11. Number 11. Okay, I'm talking about St. Paul's. Why not make a biosphere for St. Paul? You have climate, I mean, I'm talking about the whole thing, the whole thing. You have climate control, which means you could expel all moisture and smell, and with solar panels, you could generate enough energy. And with a good plan, with a good plan, with a good initial plan, what to do with the facility, you could easily draw in investments and donations, but you have to have a good plan. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. I think at this time, don't you... Any other comments?
Can I just say, I think we're pretty well done with the snow and our salt season, and I'd just like to thank Joe and the rest of G W for the job they've done in the village with keeping the roads clear and free from different ice and everything. So thank you. And thank you, guys.
If there are any further comments, I think that we are going to approve the minutes of March... May I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 27, 2019, especially... Thank you. And a second? And all in favor? And at this time, I make a motion, I think I can make a motion to adjourn. No. Oh, my goodness. Okay, can we approve, can we approve the minutes of March 28, 2019, regular board meeting? Somebody's second? All in favor? Aye. Now we're, now we're talking to, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? And a second? And all in favor? Thank you, Mayor. Now we have an opportunity. Now we will have citizens' comments on non-agenda items, limited to four minutes each. Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor. What a treat, you get to hear from me twice. Mayor, if my comments make you feel a little uncomfortable, I want you to try to imagine how I feel, okay? And all of you folks are adults, so let's hear this as a vote here. In all of your appointing people to various offices, you all asked everybody, do they support, do they pledge to support the United States Constitution and the Constitution of New York State? And everybody says yes. Part of this constitution is due process and confrontation clause. Okay? In the Pledge of Allegiance, you begin each meeting with a promise to me, you promised to me liberty and justice. At a hearing held against me at the Garcia Public Library, a department you fund and select board members to, this promise was violated. Prior to the hearing, despite my repeated request through the library, village hall, and police, I was 100% denied or disturbed. During the hearing, zero evidence against me was presented. No witness, no audio, no video, no document, no deposition, and only after me arguing with the entire library board for 45 minutes, was I able to extract from them an accusation. And then, time is up, hearing ended, notified a week or so later by library that my privilege to visit library had been permanently revoked. Okay? So... The reason I was, had this hearing to begin with was that downstairs library, a complete video camera surveillance, there were two girls, Catholic schoolgirls. What got me, got me started the conversation was that they were having like Snapple and Snickers bars for lunch. So like, these kids aren't being spoken to by adults. I mean, so that's how it started. But then I said to the two Catholic schoolgirls that they would be sexually exploited by the uniforms. They were mandated.
Andrew.
Why? What, you need enough? What am I supposed to bring this complaint to? The library? They weren't here.
We've heard this before, we're not going over this again.
I think a good idea is to keep this down.
No, no, we're not going over this again, Andrew.
Why not?
Because it's...
Because you're not adults, you can't hear them. Okay, the trustee took off. If you had to wear this uniform to the meeting, would you say you were being sexually exploited?
Andrew. Andrew, the sand's now.
Okay, your time, your four minutes is expired.
Time's up.
Okay.
Sit down.
Anything further? May I make a motion to adjourn proceeding? Do I have a second? Everyone? Okay, thank you. Announced.